Welcome. Thank you for joining us for the Fort Mill Town Council's regular meeting, March 14th, 2022. Thank you for joining us. I'm happy to see all the smiling faces back there. If you would, everyone, council and our audience, please turn your phones to silence so that we can give you our full attention and you ours. So, we appreciate you being here today. We will stand for a pledge of allegiance, and Ronnie, would you further meeting?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Fathers, we come before you tonight. We thank you for the many blessings of life. We pray that you would give us your wisdom to conduct the town's business, and we give you the praise and glory for it all, in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Council members, you have received the minutes from our February 28th, 2022 Town Council meeting. Are there any changes, deletions, or additions?
Here are none. I move for approval.
We have a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. Public comment. Pursuant to section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers prior to the start of the meeting. Citizens will be given three minutes each to speak. Davey, do we have anyone signed in?
Yes, Mayor, we do.
Thank you. All right. We will have Mr. Steve Trull join us. Steve, if you'll join us at the podium. Hi!
Hello. How's the council doing?
Good.
I just wanted to introduce myself and say my name is Steve Trull. I know we talked about this at the last hearing, and I just want y'all to know that I'm here. If there's a question to be asked, planning to come to y'all based on the Everleigh, I apologize for where I'm planning on expanding my existing company, which is One Lot bought the adjacent property, and we're proposing for it to be One Lot to operate as one unit in itself as an expansion to existing. And so, I'm just going to be sitting here. If y'all have any questions, just plenty comes here. Have ever been information I can provide you.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here. There are no other citizens signed to speak, so we will move immediately into presentation number one, proclamation in honor of procurement month 2022. Philip, I will read it, and then I will present you with the formal proclamation. Is that okay? Great. Whereas the procurement profession plays a significant role in the efficiency and effectiveness of business and government in the town of Fort Mill and throughout the nation, we've never known that more than now, and whereas public sector procurement professionals work to ensure effective use of taxpayer dollars while maintaining the highest standards of service and integrity within a competitive, fair, open, and transparent procurement process, and whereas the month of March is designated as National Procurement Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and whereas in addition to the purchases of goods and services, procurement adds value to an organization by performing functions such as executing, implementing, and administering contracts, developing high caliber strategic procurement strategies, and nurturing working relationships with suppliers and internal operational support of all Town of Fort Mill departments, and whereas the Town of Fort Mill procurement department recognize, support, and practice the public procurement values and guiding principles of accountability, ethics, impartiality, professionalism, service, and transparency established by the NIGP, the Institute for Public Procurement, as fundamental tenets of the public procurement profession, and whereas the celebration of National Procurement Month gives us the opportunity to further expand awareness of the procurement professional's role to governmental officials, the general public, business, and corporate leaders, whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by procurement professionals of the town of Fort Mill, we extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by those professionals. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Fort Mill does hereby recognize the month of March 2022 as National Procurement Month. Now, when I bring this down to the gentleman that will accept it, his name is Philip Acott. Philip, how long have you been in this role?
This role, four years.
Four years. I can honestly say, in those four years, it has been one of the most valuable roles that we could have selected, and you have filled it brilliantly. You have performed so many tasks that have helped us and thereby helping our citizens with the tax money that we spend. It's a tremendous service that you give to our town, and I personally want to thank you.
Come on here, folks. Your comments go away. So, Philip.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's all the truth.
Thank you.
I wouldn't want to lose him, but I'd kind of like to put him in charge of all those containers floating around in the ocean. I think we might get something resolved. What do you think? All right. Now, we'll move into presentation number two, Fort Mill Economic Partners. Mariah Price will be presenting, along with David Boust, I see.
Thank you, Mayor Savage. Thank you, Town Council. We really appreciate you letting us be in front of you today. I wanted to start off by saying thank you for being sponsors with the Fort Mill Economic Partners. It was a busy year of 2021 with the pandemic and a lot of other initiatives that were taken on by us, and we really value you and our board members for making that happen. Just to kind of review, these are our board members, and they're all incredibly important and good members of this community. We've got several board members here in the audience today, just to reinforce just how important this is to us. We believe in the Town of Fort Mill, and we're glad to be part of the business community and help serving the town's mission of serving our residents, so thank you for that. I thought it would be important to really quickly read our statement, because this is what we focus on, and more to the point, we try to make sure that anything we do surrounds this mission. So, the Fort Mill Economic Partners exist to improve the economic and social well-being of Fort Mill by building wealth, diversifying the local economy, creating and retaining quality jobs, identifying business-friendly resources, and advancing quality of life opportunities to ensure a thriving community for both life and work. And I think Fort Mill is a case study for most of the nation on what that means, so I'm glad to be here. So, some of the things we've worked through some of the years, you guys will probably recognize some of these projects, but we were, back at our founding, we were part of the Bailey Bill adoption. We helped fund the Wayfinder Study for signage. We partnered with the town to bring Winthrop Economics Class Study last year to study the thread trail connection from the Greenway to Rock Hill. Fantastic program. We've got more to speak about on that today. And we also sponsored a facade grant improvement with the town to get some of our local storefronts improved. And then, wonderful opportunity for us last year that we're continuing this year as a partner with the Strawberry Festival, the Sprint and Stroll. So, really glad to be a partner with you on that. So, just a little bit of a recap from 2021. Last year, we held the first inaugural Strawberry Sprint and Stroll 5K was a great success. We had 300 applicants, which we were tapped out there with COVID. This year, we believe that we're going to be double that, second year, double that. Fantastic. And we really appreciate the town working with us. We have a new route that ends on Main Street, really incredibly exciting, and I can't wait to see the Runners Village with the food trucks. It's really going to be an event, and like I always say with these events, do it for the tee-shirt. It's a really awesome tee-shirt. We also stepped up. We had a request for adopting a highway. We thought we wanted to get a road that had some impact and also had a need, so we adopted Dobie's Bridge Road, and I hope you all can see the difference. That was, that road was, needed some help, and we're glad to do that. We've got some really good active members on our board, and they make time to do that every quarter, so thank you for the suggestion, and we've loved working on that. The next event, which some of you had the opportunity to go listen to Winthrop when they presented it in person, they studied just about any way possible to connect those two focal points, and they also brought it through downtown, which I think is incredibly important to point out, because as you can see here, it's a journey, and it's something that's needed because we have a fantastic trail system at the Greenway, and then at the Riverwalk, we have a bridge, but how does the rest of it figure it out? Well, they did it. They also quantified the economic benefit of such a trail, and they talked about how much it's going to cost and help us pick out a route, so really excited about that. So, wonderful partner there, and they're also on our board, so Winthrop, very excited to have you with us. Another program that we did last year that I'd like to speak a little bit about, that we're going to be back to talk to you about in the future, is we said, what about if we wiped a slate clean? What would Fort Mill look like in 2050? What opportunities are out there that if we thought long-term, not short-term, not medium-term, not last week, but way out in the future, what does Fort Mill need and want? So, we have some challenging ideas that we want to bring before you. Some of you have already seen a presentation that we did, and we're going to bring it to the full board, where we really understand that maybe some of those ideas don't make sense, but there's some really good ideas in there, too. Shortening blocks, make them more walkable, adding more restaurants, create connectivity so that parking that we do have is better used, that kind of thing. It's really an exciting plan. I can't wait for you to see it, and again, I appreciate you letting us come back to talk about that, so more to come on that. Another thing that we started last year during the pandemic is we started a social event bimonthly, and we sponsor a local business. We bring in a lot of people, and we have food and drink on us, and get businesses a chance to catch up. And I think, especially last year, in a safe environment, that was important, and I was glad to do it. I was also really proud that we were able to give some local businesses some of that event revenue that they've been missing, so glad to do that. Lastly, I wanted to talk about, we've really tried to make the Fort Mill website, Fort Mill Economic Partners website, very user-friendly. I'll talk a little bit more of that in a minute, but first, some cool pictures from last year. You see our street cleanup, really cool trophies from the Sprint and Stroll, and then another networking event in the bottom right, I think that was Nextdoor over at the Amor Ortiz. So, some of the things about our website, this is a great tool. If you haven't been on it, I really encourage people to look at it. There are live tools that are not static. What do I mean by that? Well, the first is the Catalyst plug-in. It's a, all the commercial listings for real estate in the township of Fort Mill are on there, and you can click on it, you can see what's available, you can see what it's priced at. I know when I was moving my business here, I wish I had that at my fingertips without having to get through a paywall to see it. It's free. It's on our website. Second thing, we have up-to-date demographics. We're pointing to the county's statistics, so as they update it, it stays current, because that's the second thing you need to know if you want to move your business here. Why am I moving here? It's on our website. It's available to everybody. Again, you don't have to go look a million places on a drop-down menu, very easy to see. The third thing, we talk a lot about economic incentives and why you want to come here and what opportunities there are available if you want to move your business here. There's a ton of grants out there if you want to try to make them work for you. So, we actually updated this about a month ago. We keep it current. Here's an example of the demographics information. You can see we have the town and the township at your fingertips, and again, it's live. Every time the county updates that information, it flows through to here. See, these are some of the other incentive programs, lots and lots of options. If you guys are speaking with somebody that wants to move their business to Fort Mill, this is a great place to start. I'm now going to turn over to our new director, and I'm so happy to introduce Mariah to you. She's been with us for over a month now. She's doing a fantastic job. She's going to talk a little bit about what's next for Fort Mill Economic Partners.
Welcome, Mariah.
Thanks.
So happy to have you.
Thank you for the nice welcome, David. So, one of the other themes Fort Mill Economic Partners engages in are visit and learn events. So, what this means is we go to different towns that we find are similar to Fort Mill in different areas and just meet with the city officials and different members of the city and try to learn some things that they're doing and how we can take it back to Fort Mill. So, some examples that we've been to, in '17, we went to Greer, met with the executive director and the commercial development director regarding their organizational goals, their website, maintenance, and the population of the board. We also went to Travelers Rest the next year, met with the mayor and city administrator regarding the impact of the Swamp Rabbit Trail in their city. We've also went to Newbury, where we got to meet with the city officials regarding their opening of their town and the historic Opera House. And then, lastly, most recent, we went to Lexington. Now, this was during COVID, so it looked a little different, but we were able to meet with the events media coordinator regarding their city-owned amphitheater. We're excited to announce that we will be going to Belmont this year. These trips are open to town officials. If you're welcome to join, feel free to reach out, and we'll provide that information once it's set in stone. As any organization, in order to grow, you would like to have some goals, so I just want to go over some of our 2022 goals. One is to continue the partnership with Winthrop University. This is a great study that we had, and we want to continue that. We're currently in the process of identifying economic research in the fall of 2022 and spring of 2023. We also want to expand existing relationship with Fort Mill businesses, new and existing businesses. We also want to do this through a Fort Mill business survey, where we'll create that and work with them in that regards. We also want to work in executing the wayfinding signage plan within the Town of Fort Mill. We want to provide insight of the strategic business development. So, in the development inventory, what businesses do we have? What do we need? And we also want to help with strategic communications of an action plan. What Town of Fort Mill marketing communication plan for the 150th anniversary? Why Fort Mill marketing campaign? We also want to continue support of your guys' goals and objectives. We're here for you guys, too. To go into a little bit of details of some events, as David mentioned, we do have our second annual Strawberry Sprint and Stroll 5K. That's going to be on Saturday, April 30th. We are very excited of the growth of anticipated participants in the Runners Village and the new route on Main Street, so we're looking forward to that coming up. To elaborate a little bit more on the Winthrop University studies, as David mentioned, the Carolina Thread Trail Study was completed in fall of 2021, and it provided an economic impact analysis, feasibility study, and community outreach study. It also included recommendations for next steps, and like David mentioned, you guys will have a formal presentation at the next meeting on the 28th. But for future partnership opportunities, we want to, we were discussing with them right now, marketing communication strategy for the 150th anniversary, also an economic study for why Fort Mill, who we are, what businesses we have, what do we need and want, and how would we obtain that? To go into more of why we want to grow business, relationship with businesses, we do have the Community Outreach Committee that will hold the quarterly socials at local businesses and restaurants. Personally, I'm looking forward to meet and introduce our organization to new and existing businesses in downtown Fort Mill. We also want to build the communication channels between businesses and Fort Mill Economic Partners. We want to make sure and they know that it's an open communication. We have website for their use, and we also want to build that relationship. For our monthly speakers, for our board meetings, we want to be able to continue these speakers for our board members. We want relevant and engaging and informative speakers, and we want to make sure that you guys are aware, you're welcome to come to these monthly meetings. If you're interested, feel free to reach out. I've also sent my information to Virginia, so you're more than welcome to join. As David mentioned, with the website, we want to continue updating tools on this website, looking to add more resources for businesses, potentially looking into a roadmap for how new businesses to get started in Fort Mill, leading them to live webpages for impact fees, business insurance, and business licenses. And like I mentioned with our visits, learning visits, we want to make sure and let you guys aware that we're excited to go to Belmont, and that will be coming up. We don't have a final date yet, but we're working with the town. We think it would be a great opportunity because we believe that they're similar in size, they have some similar challenges and some goals, and we can learn from them. But most importantly, we just want to thank you for your continued trust and support. We're excited for this new year. I'm especially excited in this new role, and I appreciate your time today.
Thank you, Mariah. I see many faces on the back row. Could you stand up and say who you are so council will have some face recognition with the other members of Fort Mill Economic?
Start. Thank you guys for having us. I'm Elizabeth Bowers. I'm the Communications Director for Leroy Springs &amp; Company, and I serve on the Executive Committee of Fort Mill Economic Partners.
I'm Jan Martin. I work with Downton Corporation in the Public Affairs and Government Relations, and I serve on the Fort Mill Economic Partners team.
First name is Adam Ackerman with V&amp;A, and I'm also on the Executive Committee of Fort Mill Economic Partners.
Sorry, Matt. David Boust, I'm your chair, and I've got a couple months left. We've got some great goals this year, though, so thank you.
Hello. My name is Alexis Carter, and I'm here with Kusar Commercial Real Estate, and I'm with the Economic Partners on behalf of Shaw Kusar.
Thank you.
And I'm Mark Howley with York Electric Co-op, CEO, and I'd like to choose Councilman Will Ferrell to join our group and represent the city. We certainly appreciate that. Thank you.
Just for those that are unfamiliar, Larry Huntley, one of our prior council members, met with these folks on a regular and ongoing basis, and Chris Wolf will be sitting in that role moving forward. I have to say that I am thrilled with the folks leading this effort. You all have your heart in the best of places for Fort Mill. You already do a lot of work towards keeping the quality of life in Fort Mill at its peak, so I personally thank each one of you for the work that you're doing, and I see great strides towards so much achievement. I'm very appreciative.
Council, do you have questions for the Economic Development Partners?
I'd like to make a comment. I look very excited about to work with the group. Y'all do great work from what I've seen, and these are all things that are critical to the success of town. You know, while we were in the campaign, one of the things we talked about was we want more commercial growth in town. You know, how do you cut down traffic? You put businesses in town, so you don't have to drive back and forth to downtown Charlotte, or you don't have to drive back and forth to Concord every day. So, that's for every business that comes to town, that's two trips off the road. That's how we work to help solve some of the traffic issues, and you know, it's to grow the base. So, I look forward to us working all together, and I think it's a, that's a very aggressive plan y'all have put together for this year, and Mariah, that's impressive that you figured all that out in one month, so I'd say, I think that would probably take me more than that, but that's, thank you.
Anybody else?
Excited to get the tee-shirt.
I can't thank you enough. It's wonderful to see your accomplishments here in person, and I'm hopeful that as we progress through this year, that we'll do this more frequently, and we're really happy to support you guys, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. All right.
And it's great to see smiling faces not behind masks. I'm surprised we didn't lead off with that. It's nice that we're getting a little bit back to normal.
Okay. If there are no further questions for our Fort Mill Economic Partners, there are no old business items for us to address this evening, so we'll move right into new business item number one, resolution for Downtown Jams 2022, Jakana Hester.
Good evening, council. Town Council approved Main Street Jams sponsored by our downtown merchants, Amor Artists and Hobos, for the following dates, on April 16th from 12:00 to 6:00 p.m., July 16th from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., September 17th from 12:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and December 10th for 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And we are requesting a resolution for these dates and times for public sales, possession, and consumption of alcohol, and also for live music and sound amplifying equipment during these dates and times. Alcohol sales will be cut off 30 minutes before the event ends if sales are taking place outside, and merchants will be responsible for notifying customers of event-ending times, and Amor and Hobos will be responsible for alcohol sales.
All right. Any questions for Jakana? Hearing none. I'm assuming because you're asking for a resolution, we are being asked to vote. Is that correct? Okay. I need a motion for this resolution in that we have previously entertained the requests for these and received information in prior meetings for these particular jams. Does anyone have any questions they need to ask before we vote? Hearing none. I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
And I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
I got a nay. Okay. Thank you so much, Jakana.
Thank you, council.
Okay. All right. We'll move into information discussion, number one, 2020 Town Council Redistricting Benchmark Report, Chris Pettit.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll give them a second to walk out here.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Mayor, members of council, good evening. Tonight is our first opportunity to discuss the project of redistricting for our Town Council wards. This is something that we do every 10 years with the completion of the census, and with COVID and all those sorts of things, we're in 2022, and we're now just discussing the 2020 census results. So, up on the screen, we have the existing wards map. This is what we, again, currently have. We update it every time we do an annexation, but this is what we are looking at ultimately redrawing for our four wards. So, for the public, we do have seven council members, four serve a specific ward, and then we have three at large. That includes the mayor. So, our goal here, again, is to redraw our wards map using the results of the 2020 census. This is being done with a number of laws and court cases and regulations that must be followed, including one person, one vote. There was the Voting Rights Act among many others, so it's a complicated process. It's not simply just drawing lines on a map. It takes a lot of knowledge and background in it, and that's why we have a specialist group that's working with us to do that. So, the process is the town works with the South Carolina Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office. They do this for a number of municipalities and counties throughout the state. Their first step is to develop a benchmark report, which is what I've provided you all in full copy, and we're presenting a summary here. Once we go over that report, we'll obtain some initial feedback from council. We'll take that back to the RFA, the Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office. They will then begin the process of drawing the new wards map in draft form. They'll bring it back to us for review. We will hold a public hearing. The public will have an opportunity to see the map, provide their comments on the map, and then ultimately, it comes back to you for adoption via ordinance. So, that's two readings of an ordinance. So, some of the key benchmarks that came out of this report, so since 2010, our population has increased over 100%. The population of an ideal council ward, so going back to the one person, one vote, each ward should be about the same population. So, back in 2010, each ward was plus or minus 2,703 people. Based off our population increase, each ward should be about 6,130 people. So, the RFA's goal is to redraw the map within plus or minus 5% such that each ward represents that 6,130 people. The graph at the bottom there indicates kind of where we stand today. So, as you see, wards one, two, and three are all in need of the addition of some population to get to that 6,130, and then Ward four is significantly above the 6,130. So, there will be a lot of shifting of lines to get all of those within plus or minus 5% of the 6,130. And for context, Ward four, that includes White's Road, that includes Dobie's Bridge, and that's where we've had significant amount of development since 2010. So, some of the considerations that RFA looks at, wards are drawn contiguously. They should all be touching. Wards are drawn to minimize division of voting precincts. So as you see, wards one, two, and three are all in need of the addition of some population to get to that 6,130. And then Ward Four is significantly above the 6,130. So there will be a lot of shifting of lines to get all of those within plus or minus 5% of the 6,130. And for context, Ward Four, that includes White's Road, that includes Stopey's Bridge, and that's where we've had significant amount of development since 2010. So some of the considerations that RFA looks at. Wards are drawn contiguously. They should all be touching. Wards are drawn to minimize division of voting precincts. They are drawn to be geographically compact to the extent that they can. As always, wards will comply with all applicable court decisions and laws, and then wards will be drawn when feasible with respect to the existing districts and communities of interest. And so this is the part where we're here tonight to begin talking to council and receiving some feedback from council about the communities of interest piece. And so what is a community of interest? A community of interest is something like neighborhoods. Try not to break up neighborhoods, or in some communities, it may be school zones, or it may be economic districts. So for us, it may be downtown. So the request is for council to begin thinking about, are there areas that you feel it makes sense to keep within one singular ward? In staff's conversation with RFA, we think absolutely keeping neighborhoods together makes sense, and for us, that's probably the biggest thing. School zones, you know, maybe don't make the most sense because every time we out of school, school attendance zones change. That happens fairly frequently. We're all in the same school district, so the other one staff thought of was, you know, the downtown area. Do you try and keep downtown together if that's something that we feel like the downtown region, even though it may not have the most population, maybe they have specific interests that want to be represented by a specific ward? So with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions, comments. Again, not necessarily looking for your input this evening, but just to, over the next couple of weeks, be thinking about this. The project ultimately will take several months. The RFA is working first with communities that are having elections this year. Since we don't have an election until next year, we do have some time to think about these things before we have to provide them with input. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
Chris, is consideration given to those areas with population growth that's vested or in the pipeline?
No, it is as of the date of the census. So when you look at, just for example, Elizabeth, Elizabeth has a population of zero, but very quickly it'll have a population.
That's what I'm asking.
Exactly. So yes, it does very quickly get out of balance, and we do redistricting every 10 years. You can do it more frequently than that. It's just you have to do a little more work to do that because you don't have the census necessarily to have.
What's the cost to the town to redistrict?
We pay nothing to work with the RFA. You can hire outside consultants, but the RFA works with municipalities at no cost.
Those were my two questions.
Chris, a question very similar to that. There's a lot of gaps in here on chance the city limits, and the districts have to be contiguous. So with Elizabeth coming on, that would help fill in some of those areas to help, you know, make contiguous like Ward One, because obviously it needs some adjustments there. Would that make it, if it touches up on four, would, I mean, is that something we can look forward and utilize that? Or is it as is today?
So their goal is to just have, what they don't want is, just, I'm going, talking colors. They don't want a little green in the bottom left and some green in the top right. They want all the green to be together, all the blue to be together, all the red to be together. That's kind of the boundaries they work in because they, again, want geographically to be as compact as possible with the wards. And they do take into consideration each ward member where you live because we don't want to district you out of your ward. That's not something that we're doing, so.
Okay, I do split two streets and I'd be out of my way.
I think the beauty behind our forefathers in the ward system, I remember, I thought it was pretty neat. I remember when Stephen Bevins posted a picture from the Fort Mill History Museum that said, "Know your wards", and it was from like 100 years ago, and I thought, man, 100 years ago, in the election we went through three years ago, some people were smart enough 100 years ago to realize, all right, there could be block voting going on at some point over, you know, an issue. So we're all, well, you live in a ward, but as a reminder to the public, we're all running all across town. Everybody votes for everybody. You just live in the ward you serve in. But I thought that was pretty neat when whoever thought of this long before I was alive had a pretty, they knew what they were doing.
All those complaints in Ward Four, keep sending the.
I'll send them my at-large rep down there.
I do think as this is taped, and many people are unsure where they live in elections, I think it's important to note that you might vote for a person in your ward, but once a person takes this seat, we work as a team, and we represent all of the citizens of Fort Mill, not just those in the ward in which we were elected. So and we understand that on this bench, so I'm grateful for that concept as well, Mr. Moody.
Chris, given that there's a 5%, give or take on there, is there a way we can look at a ward like where Elizabeth is going to end up being and put it as a, that ward a negative five, smaller by that 5% knowing it is going to be growing pretty quickly in the near future?
Yeah, we can look at that. We can certainly provide that input to them and see if they can accommodate that.
And also a little bit of the roadways, too. I mean, it's different colors depending on which map we're looking at. But the light blue on yours, there's a couple little spots that kind of cross the road. You know, you see what I'm saying? It's that one little area. I can't tell by the map. It's too blurry. But a couple small areas, just kind of grouping them together, if it makes sense. It looks like there's a few lost in La La Lands, kind of. Is that what it is? I can't.
Well, we had an umbilical cord at one time.
Yeah, that's exactly what it looks like, Quinn. You're right. This area here. Just I think major roadways would be nice, depending on what we've got going. We'll try to keep one ward on one side of the road.
Sure. That's the umbilical cord.
Is that the umbilical cord?
I think a school board used to try to use major landmarks like waterways, major highways, things like that, so it's, makes it.
Well, and.
But you don't want to divide neighborhoods also, too.
Yeah, and potentially what happened there back in 2010, I don't know that we had those properties south of 160 Anex. So when they come on board, we, as staff, we pick whatever it's contiguous to. So the map gets uglier every 10 years, you know, over the course of the 10 years. So we're going to try and clean it up with this, this project.
So what's our timeline from this point? When will we need to make our presentation, we staff town to?
Again, I think we have, we've probably got a month or so to receive this input from council. We're, our hard deadline, I believe, is March of 2023 to adopt an ordinance, to be ready for the 2023 election. So there's absolutely no concern for not having enough time from the RFA's perspective. Again, they're still working with several communities that have elections this year, but I think we do have some time. And then once we have that, it should not take them long. I mean, we are, we do have a lot of differences in population amongst our wards, but from hearing from them, we're a relatively easy case for them to work with. So it should not take them very long. So I would say in the next few months, we should have a draft map for you to look at.
Yeah, there's nothing to prohibit us from doing it ahead of the.
No, absolutely, absolutely. And we've, you know, we've been in line for a while, and it took them a little while to get this benchmark report put together.
Great. So we'll get any comments back to you within 30 days, and then you'll have, will you come back to us prior to making the recommendations to them? Or will you just kind of make the best decision?
Sure, yeah, I can follow back up with you and do that before I provide that input to RFA, yes.
That'd be awesome. Perfect. Any further questions in regards to this item on redistricting? Hearing none. Thank you, Chris. We appreciate it. Information and discussion item number two, temporary signs. Penelope is our subject matter expert.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
This is a discussion item for the temporary signs. Just to give some information, because since we have three new members on council, last year, we went through the temporary sign text amendment through Planning Commission, and then we came to town council. And in August of the town council meeting, council advised staff to go into a work session, and we had a work session in September, and there was two items that we needed to look more into it. One, council advised staff to allow feather flags as a use, a permitted sign. And the second thing was to look, to do more research for political signs. And so staff researched about a dozen counties and cities, towns about, you know, do we fall in line with what we're proposing for the text amendment for temporary signs and specifically the campaign signs? And we were. We also got legal opinion to not really mess, really to have more restrictions on the campaign signs because of previous court cases based on content-based language. So at the last discussion meeting, I know three council members were not there, but we just discussed again the staff report that you all have in front. And just to briefly, one second. In regards to the campaign signs, or election signs as we call it, we have such signs shall not be located on public property or in the public right-of-way and must be confined wholly to placement on private property with permission of the property owner. We also added such signs shall not be placed earlier than 60 days prior to the election to which they apply. It must be removed within seven days after the election. Size of the signs shall not exceed six square feet in an area and shall not exceed a height of four feet. So I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Just from a process level, we don't have to go back to Planning Commission because we had that correspondence, you know, council table did or waited until the session. So whatever direction you would like for staff to move forward, we would bring it as first reading at a town council meeting and then have a public hearing, because the public hearing was never held when we came to council in August of last year. And then we would have a second reading for the text amendment for the temporary sign section.
Council members, what questions do you have for Penelope?
So I have a few. Penelope, thank you for the, all the work you've put into this. I know the research can sometimes be a lot of effort. We've got some changes in here I'm looking at, but this high-level poll signs, so we've struck those. We've got them prohibited in Section 4. Do we have a definition to the layman of what a poll sign would be? And that's just because I've read some illegal agreements in my life that, you know, what I think is a poll sign and what Mr. Moody might think is a poll sign could be two different things.
Yes.
And also we have one for feathered flags. So what's a feathered flag? So I think it just needs to make sure it's defined, so if it is clear.
So currently, we do have a definition for a poll sign already in our ordinance, our zoning ordinance. For the feather flag, we do not have an actual definition. We could add a definition for feather flag on there. And just to also remind you, any existing poll signs will be grandfathered. We're not going to go into an amortization of getting them out, the poll signs. Whatever poll signs are in the town, we would leave them. It would just not be allowed to have any new poll signs.
Isn't it going to be hard to separate the two from the staffing standpoint to know? I mean, because very few people go out and get a permit to put a sign up. They just go do it. So how are we going to determine when a new one appears?
Well, I'm gonna.
Google Maps is a wonderful tool that we use, and there's actually Google Maps, they're updating it now. So you can go look on Google Maps, and you got 2021 views of most areas, so that's our good sheet.
But you get what I'm asking. That's labor intensive.
Absolutely.
And I just want to introduce Nick Coffin, our zoning administrator, that is always on top of things with signs. And we also have Chris Ray, the code enforcement officer now, that he has a really great working relationship with Nick that keeps us on our toes of things that are coming up in the town without a permit.
So but if they're pulling a permit, couldn't we take a picture after it's installed, attach it to the permit in the database and have it?
That could.
As a record? Basically, any permanent sign, could we not take a picture or attach it to the?
So we, in our system, when we, basically with the approval, we also have a plan that was approved with shown in the mention. So we have it at least back, at least eight years or so. So moving forward, we have that.
Yeah, I don't worry about the ones that are permitted. It's the ones that aren't that seem to be the thorn in our side from the standpoint of, I think that we buy houses or CBD oil, we can take them down one day and they're repopulated the next.
There's 10 more.
You know, I'm just saying. And it does trouble me, even though I have put signs out and run for election more than once. Election time around here, it just gets trashy. It gets really bad. And for me, I can't fuss about it as freely as I would like because I don't know that we're communicating upfront as well as I would like on what's allowed and what's not. So that's all.
And how, if, I'm going to pick on, I'm not going to say the company name, but I've complained about this before, but I've almost been hit twice pulling out of Walmart.
Oh, yeah.
There's one right there. I mean, you can't see the line. I mean, you can look left and look right, and look, you almost have to pull out in the road. And I just don't know what, I mean, when someone drops a 10-foot poll sign in the ground, I mean, I'm sure it was probably permitted, but that's just one that personally, my wife got hit at that intersection already, and then I've almost been hit. And so, not, she didn't get hit because of the sign. I'm not saying that.
It's an area where pedestrians cross.
It is. It's just a rough, I mean, I don't know if we can look into that one.
Yes, and I don't mind sending a note and asking the company to move that sign. They should have a right to advertise, you know, that they have property for lease or they have property available, but it should not create an unsafe condition for our folks, either pedestrian or traffic.
Well, I think all the changes are appropriate, and I just want to put a little retrospect on it. Years ago, it was way worse. We had a very aggressive planning manager that spent his off-hours pulling up signs. Because it used to be, coming into town, there would be this housing development, this, I mean, it'd be 20 or 30 signs. And he was in the paper several times, pulling them up and throwing them in the back of the city car. So I applaud that effort, and I think it's paid off, because, and then it got to be Friday nights, they would come put them all up, and then they would take them down Sunday, and so that was better. But now I think they've pretty much given up, except for there's a few off-premise signs, you know, that I think this will help clarify, and it gives, what I liked about it, it takes out any ambiguity is what I think you were trying to do.
That's correct.
Well, unfortunately, with GPS and a lot of the newer technologies that allow us to find things from an email instead of having to look for a waving flag or one of those yellow things, I think we've gotten a little bit better as population. But I still think the smaller types of signs that require an employee to go out and pull them up, and then they come right back the next day, those are the ones that worry me the most.
Mayor, can you explain, can you define the yellow thing?
You know, the thing that has arms.
I just wanted to see how you were going to explain that.
I know, you knew.
Yeah, but I just want to see you do that, so.
Now, Penelope, one of the questions we had last time when we discussed this was the town itself, do we have any of our current signs that we're going to have to be removing because of any changes? So we looked at Farmer's Market, for example, the signs that we've put out with that, you know, the banner that we tend to put out in front of Town Hall with whatever events are coming. I want to be sure that we're not asking constituents to do one thing and we're doing another.
Yeah, no, we're being fair, whatever, you know, the outside citizens, we have to do as well.
Okay, perfect. So let's making sure. I'm ready for this to come before council for the, I haven't asked anyone else, so I will just voice my own. But we have looked at this several times and made comments to it. So I'd kind of like to expedite making the decision and moving forward with publicly providing information, communications on what's allowed and what's not. And to Lisa's point, we can take a picture of a feather sign and throw it on. And to Lisa's point, we can take a picture of a feather sign and throw it on there and say, this is a feather sign. You're not allowed, or you are. You know, we can do that, and we need to make it that simple for our public.
And I think we've got a perfect team to work with, with the Fort Mill Economic Partners. They're willing to build, what do you do to do business in Fort Mill program or packet? We can easily make sure they understand prior, you know, when you go to open up a business, here's what the rules are. So I think we can definitely link in with them. I agree with the mayor, pictures are a wonderful thing.
The overlay districts have some special requirements. Is that included in here, in the new ordinance?
Yes, it was.
It is, I just want to make sure that...
Make sure there's no conflict.
Right, exactly. Because I know some of the newer overlay districts have very specific materials and bases and lighting and us, we just need to put it all, just the preggo, put them all in one thing, so.
And then on the election signs, we still continue to have the notification when someone signs up to run for a public office, they get a notification of the rules.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Cook, for mentioning that, so everybody on TV knows. If you file with York County Election, they do receive a policy from, you know, our, you know, you cannot place signs, you know, on private property or, you know, without permission in the right-of-way. But again, you know, it's a lot, the average person doesn't know about where is the right-of-way, but we do provide that policy statement.
We had a little discussion about that last time on maybe along, since we're providing that additional piece of information, maybe just a right-of-way 101, you know, just like an example of what that is. It's easy to throw a diagram in of what a site triangle is, and, you know, those change very, depending on where the location is, but just a quick, you know, maybe a little extra summary.
There are nuances in who owns what. And I'm a big fan, and I've had one sign, I all those times went in the wrong place. But I'm a big fan of if we have to pull it up once and we tell you that's not a spot you can put it in, and they go right back the next day and put it up, I think we ought to charge them a fine. I do. I believe wholeheartedly, that is a cost to the taxpayer that we have to put somebody in a truck and go pick up that sign we just told you not to put there. I don't agree with allowing people to violate that over and over and over again at the taxpayer's expense.
I agree.
I do not. And so for clarification on election signs, though, it's basically you have to put it in private property.
Pretty much.
There's really no other place to put it, so you need to know the property owner.
If you don't own the property.
Yeah, exactly.
With the owner's approval. But since we just ran through it, that's when you register, you do get the packet. Of course, you have to read the packet, and I don't understand it, so.
You have to sign it, though, don't we make?
No.
I think I just get, when you register, you have to give you...
It's some good information, but...
That's part of your hundred dollars.
It would be nice to put some teeth to it, like a file or something.
Yeah, it's hard, I'll be honest, just by talking to an attorney in Charleston that does this for a living with the whole recent court cases with content neutral. I mean, it's a very sensitive topic, and it's been challenged in court. So he advised us what we had proposed to continue to do with that policy statement.
I think this is definitely a step in the right direction. There's no end-all, be-all solution for everything, but Lisa's cleans up the vague language and it updates some of the ordinances, so I'm fine with it. One man was speaking, one vote speaking, but I think it's a step in the right direction. That means that we won't have to readdress this at some time. And it's way better than it was ten years ago, I'm just saying, because they used to be everywhere.
And I think from the town's perspective, you know, we've gotten better with communications, with a newsletter or website. There's so many more opportunities now with the new rules that we have established that we can educate the average citizen. And so that could be another way during election time to have some type of communication of where you can put campaign signs.
I also encourage staff, if you're taking them up on a regular basis or there's something in the ordinance that we're doing that's not working, that's not giving you the teeth, come back to us, let us know. We don't know, we're not out there, so feel free to, very openly, feel free to communicate with Penelope or Davy and let us know.
Thank you.
I got a few comments before we close out here, so I'm just going to be as quick as I can on these.
The sign man, oh, Lord, the sign man has comments on signs.
So as far as election signs go, my take on it was, and I think it was deemed maybe a little aggressive, but my take on it was when we did the election, that night, everything was down by sunrise the next day.
Mr. Garrison mentioned that last meeting.
To the citizens of Fort Mill, to your point, I think it looks, it litters up the town. I don't like it. It's a necessary evil, as they say. I would love to see the aggressive language in there that'd be up by sunset and next morning. I know we were out until, I think I got home at 1:45 in the morning that next night, or, you know, the night of the election, so point of ponder, input. Section 6.1 talks about construction signs. The last paragraph says, shall be removed by the site, from the site within thirty days after completion of the project. Could we not put upon completion of the project? Because if the project's done, there's no sense in leaving a sign up for thirty days, so.
Again, that's terminology. If you wanted to change that, I could make that as a change when I'm working on the text amendment to bring back.
Just throw that out there to see if it gets any traction with anybody else.
Okay.
The section 6E mentions civic and religious. We're kind of going on the assumption that they are a nonprofit because it kind of groups when it says, and other nonprofit community. It kind of implies to me that civic and religious would be nonprofit, and they're not. I looked up several of them today, so there are some groups that would not be...
So that needs to say, or other nonprofit, is that what you're suggesting?
Right. The under, also under 6E, it was this, I think it was E, hang on. Yeah, here it is. With permission of the town manager. That kind of puts a lot of weight on one single person for a judgment call.
Which one are you on, Mr.?
On 6E.
Same, very first time.
Same paragraph.
Oh, I'm sorry.
May be allowed with the permission of the town manager. So just trying to, you know, whether, and it goes on to that such material is neither controversial nor offensive of the activity or concern, et cetera. Just thinking that puts a lot of weight.
I'm with you on that one, sorry, Davy, but I say we take that off of you and your responsibility. There's, I can't think of a single time that there ought to be somebody coming directly to you and asking, can they put a sign up?
So would you say to the appropriate town staff, or you want to strike that permitted?
Yeah, I'd strike the whole thing.
Is there a town when any of these agencies are coming to us wanting signs on town property?
Maybe allow the permission.
There will be, I'm sure. That's what this is, try, this is our chance to kind of solidify that.
I think they need to go under the same ordinance as anyone else.
Right, right.
I don't know who should put signs on town property other than town.
I would say we should never start that because it will not go well, in my opinion.
Yeah.
And just another more quick thing, and I'll let you go, I promise I'll move on. The feather flags, they are listed as no permit, no defined length of being able to be displayed nor their placement.
Where are you?
Where did I get that one, feather flags? I think it was non-permitted, or non...
Required, a permit's not required for a feather flag.
So it's pretty, it's down there by itself, so really, in theory, you know, and I think what we try to do is fill in all the gray areas, make it black or white. Right now, I can throw a feather flag anywhere I want to. I think they're very current, they're very, they're good for advertising and things, but it has no, you know, it says, basically, I don't have to have a permit for it, I can stab it in the ground wherever I need to, so.
Are you recommending with the size limit not to exceed X, Y, or something?
I think the size is okay. None of them are really big because they blow over in the wind, but I think it's a matter of they would fall...
Even she's hot.
Yeah. Under, you know, something that would have to have a permit. I'm just thinking there's something that doesn't...
They do get looking bad after a period of time.
Yeah, and they can be, and there's nothing really saying that they can be in the right-of-way. I guess maybe that would fall into...
Well, you know, this is...
There is a catch-all for no right-of-way.
Okay, okay.
Have to be maintained at the beginning of the sign section, so.
Because those can be very distracting, you know, they tend to put those out by the edge of the road.
Certainly, limit, yeah, you know, the number on the property or whatever.
Just food for thought or take some input. It just seems like they're, I can put one of those pretty much anywhere. Maybe the, maybe the right-of-way areas cover that.
It is.
But, you know, it's a good point because last time it was just discussed, please allow that as, you know, that a feather flag could be allowed in the town of Fort Mill without a permit. Now, if you want to put something, you don't have to get a permit, but you can't have three per business. This is the opportunity to put something in this section.
And Ben, I think that was maybe the first time that we talked about this. Churches use them, schools use them, and we don't want to prohibit that opportunity.
Definitely not, so, I mean, I think they're great things.
Well, there's one at Hardee's or it was the other day, and that's why I said, it's kind of, it's made to find, you know, height, because right now it could be fifty-foot tall and ten feet wide.
There's typically no bigger than about twelve feet tall.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If you put restriction on what is a feather flag, that would be, yeah, they're pretty...
I think they're great, there will be, no qualms about that, it's just, it's pretty open-ended, so.
Is that complete or this, Mr. Ben?
I'll stop there.
No, it's okay.
No, I'm good, I'll stop there.
That's what you're for. We're good.
You're showing me up.
Another idea, in lieu of fines on the political signs for repeat offenders, let's pick them up, give them to the police department, use them for target practice, and then give them back to them, so that might get the message across.
That'd be good for the police department. All right, with that, Penelope, if you will include that on our next agenda.
On which agenda, the April 11th?
Sure.
Or do you want the March 28th?
Yeah, let's don't do April 11th.
You gotta have two hearings, I mean, two.
I have to do a public hearing, so definitely, I could do the public hearing at second read-in on April 11th, if you want to do it first read-in in two weeks, March 28th.
Let's do that, let's do the 28th.
First read-in, March 28th, public hearing on April 11th.
Yeah, we need to talk about April 11th because I don't know, we haven't talked as a council that particular date, first day of spring break. There are people that aren't going to be here, I'm one of them.
Okay.
So we'll need to talk about that date as soon as possible. Okay.
Just let me know, Mayor, because I have to do a fifty-day, a fifteen-day public hearing ad.
Gotcha.
And it's due this week.
I've got it documented. Thank you. All right, I think you don't sit down. Okay, information and discussion item number three, Trails Master Plan, Penelope.
So excited for this.
Yeah.
So basically, back in 2020, before the world changed, the council at the time did a resolution to support a Carolina Thread Trail Master Plan Amendment for the town of Fort Mill. And so they approved it, and this amendment was to help to create future trails to come into the downtown area of Fort Mill. And so this was added. We started having a discussion of basically having a comprehensive plan for master plan for trails for the whole town of Fort Mill. Obviously, COVID-19 happened, disturbed our lives, but taught us the importance of being able to connect with nature and to get outside to preserve our quality of life. And so now we're ready to basically, you know, commit to the process of a master plan for trails. And so this master plan for trails will serve as a living document that will be updated as new opportunities become available. The goal of the project is to connect existing trails with future destinations such as the downtown area, identify other locations for establishment of new trails, and prioritize segments for trail construction based on the feasibility and opportunity. And we just recognize that bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure should be an integral part of our community. And my friends, other people that work at town of Fort Mill, they make fun of me, but I've been using the slogan as, what is Fort Mill? It's families, festivals, and footpaths. So this is something I'm very excited to get started with the master plan. So the reason why I'm bringing it to you all today is, you know, we want to develop an implementation plan that puts us on the path toward reality, on realizing the vision of the town of Fort Mill. We also want to study two to three corridors more intensely so we can understand the construction feasibility and design for short-term construction consideration. We want to, we want to get some trails on the ground. And so what I need from all of you tonight is direction. And, you know, I want to hear if y'all have any concerns. You know, our process basically is we're finalizing an RFP upon conversation tonight. Then we'll select a consultant, we'll establish a trail master plan committee that will primary, well, excuse me, that will be the primary lead in meetings and discussions of the plan creation. And I really believe we need two members of town council to serve on this committee and also two members of planning commission and any other stakeholders that promote trails and to help us be leaders in this trail master plan. And so basically, we'll review the existing conditions, talk to community stakeholders, review plans in place, and with all the documents that we already have approved, and then determine, you know, where are the important points for the town? And so we'll verify the vision, identify a map, pick the two prioritization segments. One segment that we've been talking for a number of years is to connect the Ann Springs Closed Greenway to come into the downtown of Fort Mill and then further on to make that connection to the community to go into Riverwalk, to have that regional connection with the existing trails at Riverwalk. And so the plan is going to establish guidelines for overall design considerations. We need to figure out how we're going to fund this, these trails. You know, people think it's, they're really cheap to build trails. Well, no. One mile can cost up to a million dollars of a paved trail. So we need to figure out funding opportunities and strategies. So this master plan is going to tell us that. Long-term maintenance, needs and requirements and costs, because after the trail is built, then we have to rely on our public works that's already strained. So we need to have a plan to how we're going to continue to maintain these trails. And then the last piece, it's an important piece, but I don't want it to delay too much the overall vision, just from my personal opinion, is the marketing and branding of what do you want this trail to be called? Or, you know, moving forward from a marketing of the town of Fort Mill. I think it, you know, we have a section in the RFP that we would like to get ideas, but I don't want it to tie us up, you know, not to finish the overall master plan design just in case if council feels they need a little bit more time for the branding. So, you know, I'm open to any ideas. You know, we just need to get started with the RFP. I know Philip has been patiently waiting for me. We would like to, you know, we have the advertising period for the consultants. And that's about it that I have right now, let me see.
Do we have funding for the consultant currently?
I'm sorry?
Do we have current funding for the consultant?
Yes, yes. The previous council did give considerable funding, and we do have that that was approved from October 2021.
So personally, this is one of the more exciting projects. I got this excited about the amphitheater and look how great it turned out. This one is just wonderful. I can't wait for us to get started, so I don't want to do anything to hold up us going out for an RFP. Council, you have...
Oh, I agree. Penelope's heard me, people that don't know me, but this is, I've been preaching this for years to move forward, so I'm very excited about this. And I want to go ahead and volunteer to, you've got two slots for the council. I'd love to be part of that. I know the mayor is looking at it. The, but also, we've also had some other works done, just like the economic partnership. I think they've got the Winthrop Program that's done, is that a master plan? So I'm not sure we're going to throw away any work that's already been done. And also, we've got some expertise in town, we've got, you know, members of the Carolina Thread Trail, we've got, so we have some people that are going to be very passionate about this, but I think we do need a master plan. So as new development comes on, that we, how do we tie into it? How do we make, because this is, this is a great opportunity to start putting all these assets together, so.
Well, we, and Penelope can fill you in as well. We've been talking about this for a couple of years with the Thread Trail folks, with the Greenway folks, with people that have already done this so that we're not recreating the wheel and costing more money, so that we do it right the first time. So the Winthrop Part... So the Winthrop part is one piece, and then we've got the Carolina Thread Trail folks with one piece. And we've gotten so much energy built up that I'm just, can you put it out tomorrow?
Yeah, and to help to clarify, you know, some of those studies, like the mayor stated, you know, we have a copy of the Winthrop study. Based on the RFP, we put in existing plans that we've been very blessed to have adopted. So I'm just going to spell it out just for, for the people to know. Carolina Thread Master Plan, Town of Fort Mill 2040 Comp Plan, the RFATS Bicycle slash Pedestrian, Pedestrian Connectivity Plan, the 2050 Long Range Transportation Plan, the Collector Road Plan that was adopted, York County 2035 Trans, excuse me, Comprehensive Plan, and then also for the consultants to look at the Winthrop Study 2021. So the goal is, look at all the documents and then also have, you know, the meetings with the stakeholders. And I guess some of the dialogue that I need tonight from you guys is, you know, does the outline match your expectations, and have we missed anything?
So on that list, the one thing I had to be missing is just that connection with the Greenway and their plan that they have, listing it under that same list of resources. Because I know they have recently done one as well. And then the other question, I know it's going to sound somewhat silly, but we just had some wonderful people presenting about a sewer line that's going to be built coming through. And while we don't necessarily want to go through the sewer, the lines are clear cut. And is there a way we can marry on some of that clear cut land for some of our trails to not have to clear it twice?
There's your naming opportunity too, just throwing that out there.
Yes, so Penelope and I talked about this, and, and I appreciate she's smiling, because I'm, I mean, she's very excited about it too. But Pine, and I, and Penelope has some expertise in this. She's done a lot of this in her previous role. But Pineville's done a great job using sewer lines and easements, there's unbuildable areas. In the Pineville area, I've gone up there, I think they have like twenty miles, and it goes back behind the sewer plant. I mean, some of it, but it's, it's really used. You go up there at like six, seven o'clock in the morning, and there's people out there all the time. So it's, that's, that's a great use of that, because easements have to be there anyway. So that's, that's something we will look in.
Well, and since you bring that up, safety is another part of it, because some of those areas have had safety concerns. So I want to be sure as we're doing these trails, how can we maximize the safe environment? You know, whether it's a telephone along the way, or a charging station, or just lights, you know, maybe a camera, I don't know.
Sure.
But just making sure we're reviewing the safety piece of this, especially because you will be in the wooded areas.
Yeah. Two things I want to say. Davey and Chris and I took a field trip on Friday, and we went to the city of Lancaster with, for the Lindsey Pettis Greenway. Not sure if any, if y'all remember the late Lindsey Pettis. He was a conservationist and the Katapa Valley Land Trust, and over the years, he was acquiring easements for a future trail. And so probably almost close to ten years ago, they got together, and Sherry Gregory formed LLC, Lindsey Pettis Greenway, and we got a group of local individuals that had interests, you know, in the, in the city of Lancaster. And then, you know, they reached out to planning officials, so I was on that board. And, and long story short, they created a nonprofit, because we have to, you know, we'll have a master plan, but then afterwards, the town of Fort Mill is going to have to look at a funding revenue source to help these, how are we going to build these trails? And going to your safety, we, you know, with stakeholders, we did have people from the, the city police of Lancaster that served, the chief, the former chief was on the committee. And there are ways as we build the trail to work with the police department. I keep on pointing back, maybe we'll have season on, on the committee, but, you know, because that's. You know, there's, there's a connect, I mean, you have to plan for that, because yes, you know, safety is a number one concern. So that is something that, you know, I hate to say this, it's in the weeds, but it's very important. And, you know, the master plan will pretty much say something about it, but then it'd be more of a work task of like, how are we going to do that? Can we afford certain things, certain elements that we could put on the trail from a safety standpoint?
And kind of from that same thought process of what does it look like? And I know this is more in the weeds technically. Are you thinking always paved paths? Or could they be some natural paths, yeah, of the light gravel like what the Greenway has? Are we thinking a variety of everything?
We are thinking a variety, and that's the point of the feasibility studies. They're, we're going to, they're going to give us options of, you know, how much is it going to cost if we do boardwalks and asphalt or concrete? Or there could be a section that we see a future trail coming off, like behind Walter Elijah Park, and we think crushed stone. I mean, they'll give us options. But specifically, the, the two feasibility studies, I mean, we really want to see trails on the ground, you know, in, in ten years or less, if we can.
Please, I don't want to go with a long.
So we're going to have to be, we're going to have to be fundraising. We're going to have to be looking for source of revenue.
Chris, you're going to be on a wheelchair. Ten years, seven years.
No, this is great.
Just a couple of thoughts. One thing that, again, to your point, the public that may be watching, they may not be aware of the work that you've done, and Chris has overseen that planning commission integrates into development agreements for, they're being passed in different areas that are developed throughout town, and things to try to make those paths somewhat like the sidewalks that people complain aren't connecting. And the plan is to have those that connect, and some of them do. So that's a great job that you guys do on that end too.
And there will be a component, I'm sure, with the master plan, that they're going to tell us what we can implement in our zoning ordinance. So obviously, if council agrees to that, any changes that you want requirements for developers to help with building these trails from a funding standpoint, or even just donating easement, that needs to be codified in the zoning ordinance. So the master plan would, would put everything in place, and then we would present, the consultant would present this to you all. So I'm looking at about a year timeframe. And then they would present it to you, and then we would move forward with adopting that, that master plan.
I would certainly love to try to get to a point where we're ready to make some decisions, especially financial ones, prior to the budget cycle, I guess, next year.
That's a good point.
Just so that if there are some low hanging fruit that we can afford, we can move forward with it. If there's those nation sponsorships, and again, we have a very servant minded community. So the other part is, as we look at some of these bridges and so forth, I see Eagle Scout projects all over the place. You know, I, I just see a group of people wanting to help.
Yeah. And as a, as a planner, it's very important to get the adopted master plan for trails. So then you, as elected officials, have a, a document that you can go out and say, hey, you know, can you help us with this grant, or can we apply for a grant? And if, you know, staff can apply for a grant, and we have documentation that our council supports the vision for a master plan. So that helps with your grant application to get money from Duke, from Carolina Thread Trail.
From RFATs.
From RFATs, exactly.
Without the plan, you can't ask.
Exactly.
So we, we need the plan, like now.
So while the plan's being developed, will we have a team member or a team trying to pull together some of these funding opportunities, so once the plan's in place, we can start shooting requests out?
That's part of after, you know, the, the master plan. I mean, obviously, they'll, they'll probably put a piece in the master plan of ways to look as a council. But that's, that's a separate workshop after, really, to see what are we going to do?
Hopefully, they'll be able to tell us what things we could apply for, because this is their area of expertise.
Sure.
Caroline Redfords had already made some suggestions.
I think one of the most important things is as new developments come online, and as our time at planning commission was tried to, we want walking trails. We want these trails, and we're asking for it. So having this plan, we can say, here's, here's more concrete what we're looking for. We need twenty feet, we need fifty feet, whatever. Because I think most large developments, it's, it's a win-win for their, for their design too. But having the master plan, well, here's kind of what we, because we've seen some developers that tried to price it out of the range, and, and we've had discussions where, you know, crushed stone is fine. Mason's Bend has crushed stone in areas, and it's fine. And, and so, yes, you don't need to spend a hundred dollars a foot. You could put some crushed stone to get the thing in there and get the foundation, get it going. So I think, there again, there's a lot of expertise in town. I think it's just procurement month. We've got the best procurement manager in town and the area.
Yes.
So I, I, I'm ready to, I'm, just, just get going. I mean, this is great.
And thank you for giving us a draft version of it prior to. It makes it real easy for us to visualize.
It's going to get prettier. Philip's going to do more to it, but it is, you know, exactly what we're trying to, to do. Just two more questions, if I may. Are we good with two PC members, two council members? And then I say, who else do you want on the stakeholders?
Can we think about that?
Sure, sure.
So how many total are you envisioning?
I mean, you don't want to have
Too many.
A lot of people. But I do want to say, with past experience, I will put in the report that they need to do monthly updates to council. I want y'all to know what is going on every month.
Yeah, we don't want to get in a situation we were in not that long ago, where we had a partnership that was so eager and so excited, they began to communicate ahead of the other partners. And I very much want us to be good partners to everyone, and likewise back. It's very easy to get people excited, but to get the plan in place will allow people to get excited to invest. So I think the patience part on the front end is going to be difficult for me. But we will be patient, and I can't thank you enough for the leadership that you have shown on this particular project. And we're just grateful, very grateful for all of staff.
Can you tell I'm, I'm so excited right now?
Happiest I've seen you.
Just one random thought I had was, do you think, there was a, I remember a Kemble Crossing, there was supposed to be a pathway through their, through the back of the development. And it became kind of not in my backyard kind of thing. Is there a, some thought to, you know, kind of how you would, because this is a great, great thing. And I think I worry about there being people, you know, don't run it through my backyard, but.
Well, I mean, a lot of it is, again, going back and educating. I mean, we had issues like that in Lancaster when we started working with Waxall. And, you know, it was like a joint effort. They didn't want it. They were scared. And then they started seeing people. There's actually, there's more studies. Once you have a trail, there's less, like, problems, because you have more and more people walking and claiming the trail and taking ownership. So it's not, I mean, they're, you know, obviously, you have to be smart, you know, try not, at night, you know, actually, it's closed, you know, it's open from, you know, sunrise to sunset. But, um, yeah, I mean, there, there will be some people that are, you know, are against it. But I mean, it's all about education and trying to get out there into the community. I think having Ann Springs Closed Greenway in our backyard, I think that's a blessing, because the majority of people do understand the, the strengths of having a greenway in your backyard. And, and quite frankly, ever since COVID, I think even the, the builders, the developers, they're using it as a marketing tool for their new neighborhoods, because people want that as an amenity. They can care less about tennis courts, no offense. But, but, you know, you know, or swimming pools, or, you know, they really want to be out in nature and get active.
I did not tell her to stop.
I will say that, and, and there again, that, I was in the meeting with Ben at the time on that one. But in, if one is planned in the beginning, if you go to, if you go to Pineville, the trail is off of those people's property, probably forty foot out of the right of way. So it's not close to their homes to where, that, we were trying to retrofit that, right, as a discussion. So that's why the master plan is, so as you put the development in, you know, the homes will sit there, and there'll be a buffer, and it's wooded and all that. So it's, I haven't been down to Lancaster, but I've heard great things about that one too. And I saw that the economic partners talked about the Swamp Rabbit Trail. And, and I mean, it's like, there again, you, you need to start so we can work off of it. But I think it's a great opportunity as, as we have some prime property that's under development right now.
Sure. And Chris Pett and I, we went to Belmont, so I'm, I'm excited. I hope you guys do go to Belmont, because we were able to walk the trails, and some of it was behind an established residential. So there's some good examples.
We're very fortunate to be at this point in time and have so many great trails to learn from and great partners to work with. So I'm just thrilled beyond measure on this particular project.
And I'd like to go on the record to state that our mayor is not a real patient person. She mentioned something about being patient, and so that will be something to be very interesting to watch. But I think it's a lot of excitement. Thank you very much.
I appreciate putting some of the timelines to it. So the monthly presentations, knowing that we're going to have something within a year, you know, all of that kind of stuff.
And one more question, I, I promise, it's the last one.
That's good.
Are there points where we, where we want to solicit full council feedback in the middle? So for example, do you want to have a confirmation of vision, determination of priority segments? Anything, I mean, midpoint?
At one of our workshops, I think that would be wonderful to have that discussion. However, I will caution council, we are all eager individuals, and we don't want to hold up the process as we get entangled in the weeds. So you need to hold us accountable to listen, provide feedback, and move forward. Don't let us hold up the process.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
You're wonderful. One more. Information, discussion item number four, Tom Hall overlay, Penelope.
All right, let's see here.
We just keep you changing gears, don't we?
And I apologize, I have those mislabeled on the screen, so.
Okay.
I can't see that.
They're out of order, but.
It's okay. I'm sorry. I'm going by the.
You're right, I'm wrong.
Good.
Could you say that again?
Yeah, I was going to say.
Music to my ears.
Okay, um, this is basically, staff has been tasked to research a potential text amendment regarding car washes and auto repair garages within the Tom Hall Corridor District. So as we were.
I wonder who that might be?
And so as, when we were researching, let, let me give you a little history. I know, back in 2007, there was a creation of Tom Hall Overlay, Corridor Overlay, car washes, repair garages, entire retail and repair facilities were not allowed in the overlay. However, in 2011, the ordinance was amended to modify the existing language in ordinance to provide an exception for the auto repair garages. So really, tonight, what we're here to discuss is basically, do you all believe that car washes should be allowed in the Tom Hall Corridor Overlay? If you do believe it should be, you know, permitted, do we need to have conditions in the Tom Hall Overlay? So basically, you know, some conditions to consider, if you wanted to allow with conditions, is to enhance buffer requirements, orientation of building, separate, separation requirements from residential lots or residential zoning districts, and limited hours of operation of a car wash. Staff would be happy to add any conditions if you wish for us to do. Again, it's, it's very simple. It's either town council just decides to allow car washes with or without conditions as an allowable use in the Tom Hall Corridor District. Then car washes would be able to develop within the Tom Hall Corridor. We're not saying we're only allowing for one individual or one property owner. We are basically saying that if your property is zoned highway commercial in the Tom Hall Corridor Overlay, you can have, you're allowed to have car washes.
I think one of my first questions would be very, does this set, what does it do from a legal precedent if we allow this usage? And then another business were to come along and say, hey, I want my usage, whatever it might be, something that is not currently allowed?
Well, you just take them one at a time, and it doesn't set a precedent for you.
Okay, okay.
So I have a question. Explain what happened in 2011 with the exception, because you said in 2007, it didn't have it in several of the items on here, but in 2011, several exceptions were added?
Yeah, let me, let me go ahead and read it. I kind of like, it's, it's in the document, but I can read it out loud a little bit. So, so basically, you know, going back in 2011, they said in that amendment, if the repair garage was lawfully in existence prior to the establishment of the 2007 Tom Hall Corridor Overlay, that the facility could continue to operate without any interruption since the date. Then the owner or operator of any such facility of the garage place would be permitted to expand their existing facility under the following conditions. And they added conditions in 2011 where the conditions to expand an existing repair garage from 2007 could be. from 2007 could be able, if feasible, they would have to have a suitable landscape buffer fence shall be used to screen the facility from neighboring residential uses. The second thing was any outdoor storage or holding area shall be screened from the public view by a suitable fence, appropriate and appropriate landscape buffer. And three, the overnight storage of vehicles shall be prohibited unless such vehicles are located inside the facility or within any enclosed and property screened storage area. So again, you know, there's key terminology if you picked up. I mean, it was, they're allowing existing. And so there was some existing garages that did expand after this amendment. And, you know, had to have some type of buffer and landscaping, but it wasn't specific, you know, what type of buffer.
To Penelope, I have kind of a follow up question to that. So currently, repair garages entire retail can expand. And this might be more of a question for Barry because it doesn't define what it means by expanding. You know, what I would think of expand would be expand on existing property, not expand to adjoining property. So I don't know if that's a clarification that needs to be made or not.
It's existing property. Like the existing use, like the building.
I think Wallace Coleman's gas station was a good example. It was, it didn't fit the zoning, but as long as he continued to operate in it. So he could probably, just hypothetically, could have done some work on that. But if he wanted to take the property beside him, you need, there is definition of expand. Is it on that lot that's grandfathered in or is it adjacent lots?
Like Mr. Troll, you know, where his lube place and car wash, he did expand it. He has another building on that same property that he has, he was able to in 2011 to expand and put that garage based on that amendment that council had done. So there must have, you know, none of us were there, were here at that time. So there must have been some type of discussion to have the amendment.
Two of us were.
Okay. Yeah.
Let me fill in the blanks for those of you that weren't. At that point in time, we were being encouraged by the planner and rightfully so. And you're not going to hear me say much right about that situation, but rightfully so. To look at the core of downtown and make it more pedestrian friendly. We wanted, our vision at that time was to re-energize the downtown corridor and make it to where residents could walk to and from like they do now. And at the time, we were really struggling with what is downtown? You know, how far out does that go? And I do think that's something previous councils to this one has struggled with, but I think we have to make a decision. I would like to compliment you, Mr. Troll, on the condition of your business. I think you do an excellent job because I for one, since your request came to us, have ridden around and looked at other gas station, car wash. And not everybody puts the level of effort into keeping it nice that you have. So I do want to say thank you for that. That goes a long way with me. Penelope's point, I don't want us to ever, as long as, as long as I'm in this seat and breath in my body, I don't want us to make a change to an ordinance without having conditions. That it behooves us moving forward to do what we didn't do in the past and say, you know, we want these things to continue the wealth of business we are enjoying right now and the quality of life that we're enjoying. Without conditions, we're throwing that out the window. So I will not vote with my vote for anything that doesn't have conditions. No, no relation to your request or project at all. I need to make that clear. But I think we do a disservice to our town if we don't think those what ifs through and just make a change that would allow anybody to come in and do something that looks like some of the ones I've seen. So I would not support a change without conditions. Can I ask a question of Mr. Troll? Have you spoken with the Ashbrook folks across the street? Or with the neighbor to, if I'm facing your business to the left?
I've talked to Ashbrook Villas, one of our best clients. We're right across the street and it gives them the option to come to our place for a car wash or the automobile repair. And the reason why we wanted to expand it is because we've been able to be successful. A car wash, it don't have enough volume. Our car wash is limited as to amount of cars that come through there. So there's people that won't come get their oil changed because the car wash line is too long. The car wash line separated the two and given me a contained car wash. It closes every night, hours up and 24 hours a day. I know they'd like that part because nobody likes to see nothing up in 24 hours a day. Ashbrook Villas is our best client and my neighbors up the street, they all come there. I live there. Everybody in my neighborhood pretty much does. There are clientele within a mile of our place. And what we're trying to do is give our citizens, our clients, a nicer technology change. I can give them a much nicer and cleaner way. And as far as I saw, I don't need the flamboyance of some of the big retailers that you see in the margin strategy. I would want that. I want it to look just like you see ours with now. It's part of one lot, one lot bought the adjacent lot in the end of this. If we get able, if the council gives a commission, it'll be one lot with the same thing that's got it now. It'll have an automobile center and a car wash. They'll simply be in two different areas. And the car wash will stem the flow so it doesn't confabulate my lube so that they can function together and give our citizens. We're successful. We're not asking this out of the lube. Our car wash is very successful. That's why I'm here, going to expand it and separate the two so I can get the Ashbrook Villa people and everybody in there so they didn't complain about the line and the traffic count. And I think in that way, that's my message. Well, I have that specifically to the neighborhood of my right, but they are clients. They come there. I don't know them. The Ashbrook Villas. I know most people in Ashbrook Villas in Lake Dexter. The alternative to come to our place to get a car wash or to get your automobile things done, where you go to drop to Baxter, which in today's traffic, as we all say and talk about, could be 30, 45 minutes to get there and wait in line on the other side of town. Or you have to go to End of Land to get the quality of car wash that the new tunnel car wash can break to the table. And as far as the stipulations, there's three different types of car wash that's going to break it down. You've got the coin operated car wash, like lot tunnel would have, or did have. And you have the car wash like we have, which is a 24 hour small wash. And then you have the upgraded one, which is a nice, which is an encapsulated tunnel car wash. It tracks your car through. Now the size will be just like what you see in my building now, which is split face block, which is not at low level. It's a high level. It gives a lot of salary reduction. And the lights, it's running parallel to the road, so it won't affect Ashbrook or anybody. As the one we already have there now does, but no one there that don't come to that place, at least once they do.
So the tunnel would reduce the existing sound. Is that what I'm hearing?
Absolutely reduces encapsulation. Yes, ma'am. And it's also, ours is open to 160, so noise goes front and back.
I've used it.
This is a very nice one. It's well maintained. It just don't have the ability to do what the, it's a three stage car wash when you go to a tunnel car wash. And it has to be manned. So they're about to have to close. And I live behind it, so I don't mind that either. I have works washed all the time during the night and this would be better for the neighborhood. I know all my neighbors on Canalwa and they all use it. And every client we have, we talk to them as they come through there because they normally complain about, I want to come through, but there's so many cars, you can't get in and out. And this would expand the parking lot, expand our plan where it's convenient for everybody to get in and get back out and get merged back onto 160. And really for what business we already have, that extravagant advertising, we already have it done. We already have a clientele base. We're trying to give them a nicer place.
Do others have questions?
I think a lot of it comes down to that interpretation of expanding the existing facility. What, what's that to your point on the condition side of it? You know, if he's expanding, if he does adjoin the two properties. So my understanding is the second piece of property is in the county, so it would have to be annexed into the town. And, time out?
Yeah, time out. Tonight, we're just looking at a text amendment for the Tom Hall corridor overlay. We're not site specific for Mr. Troll. You know, we have to look at, you know, do, the question is, do we allow car washes in the Tom Hall corridor overlay? And if we are going to allow them, what are the conditions? But to answer some of the questions that you do have in regards, yes, the piece of property that Mr. Troll has purchased is about one acre or so. There's a house on the other side of Canalwa. Yes, he would have to come back and annex and subdivide after the annexation because that property, he wants to keep the house in the county and then the commercial part in the town of Fort Mill. And so he would come back, from my understanding, and build a brand new car wash on that portion of the property. I think it used to be the Patterson property. So that he would build that. The existing car wash, the one car wash that he has today, he would actually change it and have another garage or lube bay. There wouldn't be any more car wash. And I guess from what I'm hearing tonight, I guess he's going to try and combine the portion that once he does annex with the existing parcel and basically have one parcel where, you know, we're going to have to look to see, you know, how many businesses. I mean, does he have a right enough of acreage and making sure all the setbacks and stuff? I do want to state for the record, you know, that, that existing building, it is a very nice, clean building. But, you know, we do have a commercial appearance review and, you know, we have not seen metal buildings or split face. I mean, there's been more requests from planning commission. So I just want to let, as a, as a business owner, you know, I just want to tell Mr. Troll or anybody else that wants to, you know, build something.
Complicated than it looks.
It's, it's a little bit, you cannot build the same building the way it looks today, even though it's nice and it's clean. There's more higher standards now in the town of Fort Mill. So I just wanted to state that for the record. And that goes through the commercial appearance review. That's only the planning commission. It'll never come in front of the town council.
Ms. Coke, if I understood where I think your question was going, the expansion exemption piece of it, that doesn't apply to a car wash. It's only to tire retail and repair. So he wouldn't be able to take advantage of that, speaking specifically of Mr. Troll, to build the car wash piece.
And I think that's part of my confusion when I read the overlay district of the exceptions, everything in pink, that we've done along the way to what that was originally. Why did, you know, I understand the point of we don't want to make an exception for one situation, but it feels like we have done that in some ways before. Kind of because, I mean, when I look and it says no check cashing. But technically, check cashing is 100 feet off of Undoby's Bridge. It's just the entrance isn't on Tom Hall. You know, the coin, a lot of these. I was going to say, yeah.
Well, no, this is for information. And Lisa, to your point, when we know better, we do better.
Right.
And if, without Mr. Troll coming before us, if Penelope had said, hey, do you guys want to open up this overlay and add a provision for car washes? I would say no. I would say no because it doesn't fit what vision we had at that point in time. The changes that were made were made just like we're talking about tonight for a specific request. And I think we're giving due diligence to every request. But again, if it were not, I would have said no. And I feel certain I'm not the only one that would have said no. So I do think we have some more discussion that has to take place because I can't say even yes with conditions if I don't know what the conditions look like. And I do know and have been part of discussions where businesses have approached us. In particular, a little strip area down 160 and a storage facility that wanted to do, is it EFAS?
EFAS.
Yeah, that. And we said no. And we had some very lengthy discussions on why not. What makes sense for a business owner isn't always going to be in alignment with what we had put into place and should keep in place.
I understand, I understand.
What, when you say that Penelope, the standards are higher, right? What is that? How high are the standards? I'm going to put that back around.
Yeah, well, building materials. You know, they, just being here three years on, you know.
Southern bypass corridor district, something like that, where everything's.
No, I'm talking about a lot of, the majority of the commercial, new commercial projects in the last three years that I've been here, when it comes to the planning commission, it is basically making it, the building very functional, you know, do not have blank walls. Yes, have some type of either brick or stone. You can have some EFAS, but again, there's more design elements, which, you know, I'll be honest, it does cost more, but we have a higher standard for commercial buildings in the town of Fort Mill because this is the gateway. And quite frankly, it's, it's not just the gateway. It's everywhere. We've had some on Sam Smith Road that we made a landscaping to have better materials for the existing neighborhood, you know, to be able to have a good quality building that will last for many years.
Yeah, just from, just to give you a little perspective, I have 10 years on the planning commission. Metal buildings, there's good metal buildings and there's cheap metal buildings. There's only so much you can. But we're looking for the longevity of where it's not rusted out, not in disrepair or whatever. So there's buildings that were on obscure roads that the public would never see that we helped, we can't pick and choose who we allow. So we've held, we've got very, you know, more strict, better standards for the maintenance of those buildings so they don't become disrepair. You know, so we don't have just big, one big chunk blocky concrete block building, which may have been built 20 years ago, but we don't allow it now. So, and I think it's, you know, rising tide raises all ships. So I think that's, which talks about higher standards is something that the planning commission is really going for. And then the overlay districts may have yet another restriction on top of that. But just the very base of it is higher. And I, you know, there again, he's kept the building up nice, but there's a lot of metal buildings that look terrible and there's nothing you can do about them.
Well, I know a lot of. Go ahead. Commercial appearance reviews can be quite lengthy, so.
Yes, and, and they take time. You know, they really look into it. You know, we've had many commercial appearance reviews that we've, they've continued to work with the applicant. You know, to find another maybe affordable material, you know, not be able to do all brick, but find, you know, like stone or some other type of design element that's out in the industry today from a building standards. And so we do work with the business owner, but it is higher standards.
You know, I know, this is not just this business, but I know there was a business that left town and is now Richburg. And we, I've heard the comment made to me, and this is not a shot at any staff member in this room, that it is hard to do business in the town of Fort Mill with some of the standards we have. I mean, small businesses are getting crushed with taxes and businesses in general here in town are paying higher. You hear the complaints that it costs more to do business in Fort Mill than anywhere in York County is some of the things I've heard. So I want to be mindful, not just in this case, but for, and I know that we have these overlays in place to protect the integrity of the town. I understand that too, but at the same time, we want to, we want to try to help small businesses any way we can. And we do a lot of that already in various other capacities. So that's just my comment.
So can you come, at our next planning session, can we talk about what if we did that, the conditions might look like? And council, I task you with considering what you want to do with this, you know?
And I understand we're talking just car washes. I also would question that, you know, one of the things as a council we've talked about is our ordinances in general. Yeah, we just had the sign ordinance tonight because of some opportunities for improvements. And that's what I see this as being, as an opportunity for improvement. But also I'm curious, and again, before our time, but the stop in that Kimball Road, because it's funny to me that, you know, a tenth of a mile, literally, I measured on the way here, you know, on the other side of the Kimball Road, he could be doing the same thing, I think. I'm not positive on all the ordinance, but I believe tenth of a road, he could build this.
That's correct.
But my other question is, and to Quinn's point earlier, is, you know, our whole downtown corridor. What does downtown look like to us? And I think, to me, that's part of our opportunity for improvement is really defining what our downtown corridor is from the Peach Stand to the QT type reference or something. So I guess that's my question, confusion in all of this is, I understand what it says, but I'm also confused where we're trying to get to. And also understand, you know, I've been sitting in the townhome on Ashbrook Villas when the buzzer goes off at that facility at 10 o'clock. And also know, you know, being sound encapsulated, sounds pretty good right now too. So if you can help, and it doesn't have to be tonight, help me understand the downtown corridor piece of it compared to the.
I think Mr. Broom, you know, will probably direct staff with committees that we formed. I believe there's going to be some future committees. So those future committees could be tasked to look at other areas of the code that needs to be looked at from a text amendment. And we could discuss that on the 28th.
And let there be no mistake. And let there be no mistake, I'm not confused on what we're attempting to do. Even in our latest meeting, we talked very much about the essence of the quality of life in Fort Mill. I am not confused about that at all. Each of these things that come before us must be judged based on that criteria, which is subjective to a degree. But that is what our job is. That is our job. And we all collectively have to make those decisions. And we are working really hard on getting closer and closer to defined decisions on what that looks like. It's not going to make everybody happy, but it will be the best effort that we can put forth to keep the quality of Fort Mill as it is and encourage others to do the same.
Lisa does bring up a good point, though, when, I don't know how Kimble Road got picked, 2011. That's probably where the city limits was at that time.
We had sidewalks too. I was here.
Yeah, so I'm not saying that might be something, it's unrelated directly with this, but does that corridor need to go all the way out to, because that's all been annexed in. The storage lot down there, we held those, held them to the same standards when they wanted to make some additions. So, you know, maybe it needs to be extended all because the QT is there now. I mean, there's a lot of growth down that way that wasn't there in 2011.
But we'll have discussions on whether that represents a downtown district.
Oh, yeah, but I'm just saying, she brings up, this is a separate discussion item, but yeah.
And agreed, I agree. These are fluid plans that change as our community has changed. So.
I just hate to lose a small business to Richburg, South Carolina. And that was very disappointing to me. And I think we need to really buckle up and do that, so.
Okay. You can tell we have a lot further to go.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That ends our information and discussion items for this evening. There is no executive session. I think we've been here a while, so would like to make mention, March the 26th, there's an event in town called the Dino Encounters at our Walter Elijah Park. Then on April the 9th, we have our next second Saturday service. Because this is recorded, I would very much like to encourage everyone to look at www.fortmillsc.gov/townevents to get the latest information on what might be fun for you and your family in the upcoming weeks. So again, that's www.fortmillsc.gov/townevents. With that, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Thank you so much.